Exactly. And that's what I thought.
No, we will.
No, I'm fine. He looks like my grandpa.
Presume our normal place on the agenda, which was communication from council dippers. Mr. May, do you have anything to say?
When I ask you a question, you'll give me a point for that.
Yeah, I do. Mr. Gray.
Uh, no, sir. Stowe, I'm sorry. I'm here, Sean. Saturday night, out there in the parking lot, we've picked up, we'll be putting on a a trumper tree, it starts at six o'clock, we'll bring the kids, we'll have them back.
Uh, absolutely. May I ask Mr. Cable a question?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
In fact.
Sure.
Okay. Are you going to be Santa Claus?
No, sir, this is Beverly.
I know, but we're going to have a Santa Claus and my candy, that's early Christmas time.
It's a, it's an early Edward, uh, Christmas parade.
There you are.
Hey, Stowe, uh, what do we have going tomorrow night at, at the arena?
It's a cruise, it's a catcher cruise we had last year, had more than 10,000 people last year. It's an extended trunk or treat where all these businesses come out and they have their, uh, their tents and everything and the kids can go through and get candy and, uh, there's horses to ride, it's inflatables, it's, it's really a big deal and Kim Barrett puts it on every year. His brother, he's been fighting cancer with his brother and, uh, his brother just died recently and Kim, his daddy did too, didn't he?
Yes, three weeks ago.
Died three weeks ago from cancer, so this is a guy that's truly fighting the fight and, uh, it's a good event, they do a nice little job.
Could I support that too, obviously Friday night?
Four to eight.
At Camp Jordan Arena and then Saturday night right here?
Mayor, we're really proud about.
Of course, cops right there.
For tomorrow night, I'm not, are you sure of that, Kim?
It's, it's only the cars.
Yeah, only the cars, it's a car show, only the cars have to pay.
Okay.
It starts that, one more thing we're really proud of is that this Saturday we will host our first NCAA Southern Conference Championship and we'll be hosting the girls, or the women and the men cross-country out there and that's, that's pretty big for us to get an opportunity to do that, so we're excited about that as well.
Okay, let's see, I'll go back here, just, just one second. Mr. Gray, do you have anything else?
No, so Stowe mentioned the, uh, cross-country, do we please have two amulets on site?
Yeah, we almost landed live for us that day.
Mr. Grant, do you have any?
Yeah, uh, one more piece of, I guess misinformation that was put out in the form is talking about the, the exit one project that some comments made that we should have done that first. Ladies and gentlemen, the CMB Spirit has absolutely zero control over I-75. There, there's two little organizations, one called TDOT, the other one called Federal Highway Administration, that they don't get in a big hurry for anything. So if you're wondering why that project is taking so long, there you go. Okay? But we are in the final home stretch, at least for, for beginning the, the letting bid, correct?
We hope to have this, uh, bid in probably February or so and '17 with hopes that construction will start in March or April, but as you mentioned, uh, when you get the approval from TDOT and Federal Highway Administration, sometimes it sits and it takes its time getting through the process, so we're gonna, our engineers are on top of it, they're gonna keep pushing forward so we can get this thing out of construction.
And, uh, and that's, I guess that's about all I have. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Stowe. Yeah, I wanted to mention, I was in Wal-Mart yesterday, New Grove's nowhere to live, they told me that FLYT today is their first ever, been open one year today.
Wow. Speaking of that, it's fantastic. All right, I want to, I want to mention what I wanted to mention, asking Stowe about the, the event tomorrow night, so, um, Mr. Bill?
I have a note, sir.
Okay. With that, we will move to all business ordinance number 1020.
Ordinance number 1020, ordinance of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee to amend the zoning regulations and zoning map of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee to rezone the property located in 1016 Greenslake Road from C2 General Commercial District to R3 Residential Apartment District, tax map 168E-N012.
Okay, do we have a, do we have a motion regarding this?
Yes, boy has applied, everybody, the money commission has asked for a motion to approve.
Second. You have a motion in a second to approve? Do you have any questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Manning?
Yes.
Councilmember Stowe?
No.
Fairleigh.
Yes.
Moving on to new business, A, ordinance number 1021.
Ordinance number 1021, ordinance amending ordinance number 922, which previously amended the East Ridge zoning ordinance specifically with regard to Article 6, Sections 115.3, minimum hotel extended stay hotel requirements and standards, subsections E and J, subsection 115.4, minimum motel requirements, subsection H, and by adding additional section 115.5, penalties for failure to comply with hotel extended stay hotel or hotel regulations.
Okay, do we have, uh, a motion to do anything? Do we have, uh, approved, denied, taken?
Mayor, I have a couple of questions, I'd just like to, uh, uh, either ask him or not, or send him an email and tell him what the questions are, or, but, until I could get an answer on this, I'd like to make a motion with, uh, table this, too. I'd like to see if I can figure out the dates.
I'll second.
It is, uh, not right.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to take? Okay. If we could provide as many questions as we might have to the city attorney, uh, to try to, try to get some of the hatched out, or if there are easy answers to it, then he can provide them, uh, that would be ideal. So, uh, no, yeah, any, no, yeah.
Do you need to do it, if you, if you send it to Alex or to me, we'll converse on it.
If we can have a roll call, a motion to take?
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Manning?
Yes.
Councilmember Stowe?
Yes.
Fairleigh.
Yes.
Item B, ordinance number 1022.
Ordinance number 1022, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee authorizing the establishment of a 5% lumped penalty for non-payment or late payment of liquor or drink through the taxes.
Motion for your ordinance team to, to...
Second. Do we have any questions? And this essentially puts us on par with what other municipalities are currently doing. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Manning?
Yes.
Councilmember Stowe?
Yes.
Fairleigh.
Yes.
Item C, resolution 2605.
Resolution number 2605, resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee approving bids for the purchase of soccer uniforms, t-shirts for 2016, 2017 indoor soccer season.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Uh, second.
Okay. Motion, motion, we have Mr. Stowe, second from Mr. May.
Right.
Okay. Do you have any questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Manning?
Yes.
Councilmember Stowe?
Yes.
Fairleigh.
Yes.
All right, item D has already been dealt with. Item E, resolution 2607.
Resolution number 2607, a resolution of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee adopting the current schedule of court costs for city court consistent with that assessed by the General Sessions Court of Hamilton County pursuant to Section 6C of the City Charter.
Make a motion through.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve? Do we have any, any comments or questions? Okay, do you have anything?
No, I just wanted to know that we're not really raising our court costs, what we're doing is we're doing, we're doing additions to them like Hamilton County does, which are fees that should have been done a long time ago, like transportation of the prisoners and things like that. Hamilton County charges like seven dollars and 50 cents just to, for them to walk the causeway and we haven't been charging anything for the van to go pick them up and all that stuff, so it's not really increasing the charges, it's adding additional charges.
The last page per report.
Correct.
The additional charges.
It's basically covering costs that should have, should have been covering.
Covering a long time ago, yeah.
That's why we need to make, make a motion, anything, anything?
Uh, we already have a motion in a second, so do we have any other questions?
No.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember May?
Yes.
Councilmember Manning?
Yes.
Councilmember Stowe?
Yes.
Fairleigh.
Yes.
Item F is the Great Consent Agenda with resolution 2608 and resolution 2609.
Let's move for a great consent agenda.
Uh, second.
We have a motion in a second to approve? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Manning?
Yes.
Councilmember Stowe?
Yes.
Fairleigh.
Yes.
Item G has been dealt with. Item H, an unnumbered resolution regarding resurfacing bids. Make a motion through.
We get a call up on Monday that year?
Yeah, we received two bids for the, uh, resurfacing roads for this year. Uh, the lowest bid was $944,500. Neither of these, uh, two, two bidders that we received can do the work until 2016, they are committed right now to other projects and they are busier than that, so they resume these in, uh, probably April of 2017, but we're locked into these streets and these will be done.
Okay, is that okay? Uh, can I ask the main question for the...
Yes.
Is that okay with you?
Yes, fine with me, we kinda had a feeling that, uh, they were not gonna pull off their other jobs, they're, they're trying to get as much as they possibly can done on these others.
Yeah, I want to make sure it's okay.
This is a small project in, in relation to what they've got working on now.
Uh, that might be a motion through.
To approve the staff regulation. That would be tally construction. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Manning?
Yes.
Councilmember Stowe?
Yes.
Fairleigh.
Yes.
Jeff, I'm sorry, have you been here this evening for that? For that item?
No, it's all right.
I apologize.
I'm glad you're here, 'cause I've been watching, saying, "I care for my mom."
Okay, item I, we've dealt with. Item J, the last item on the agenda, discuss indoor take action of city taking over sports facilities at East Ridge High School.
Okay, uh, we have the opportunity to take ownership of the sports field and facilities at East Ridge High School, that would include four tennis courts, stadium, two ball fields, one baseball, one softball, soccer field, and the open field and track. Uh, you have attached to the agenda some preliminary financial breakdown of, of the annual expenses that we project, annual revenue anticipated, and then a capital outlay that would need to be done to prep and ready these facilities for play. Uh, if the concept is approved tonight by the council, we would enter, we would sit down and negotiate a joint project agreement or joint agreement with the school district and/or the county commissioners if that is necessary. There are some concerns I have regarding the capital outlay, I don't want to take over, the one concern I have is the stadium, I don't want to take the stadium over and then have to be hit a year or two down the long, down the road with heavy capital outlay expenses, for example, a new concession area or, uh, a locker room, those kind of facilities, or press box would could really push the cost up. I'm only looking at 40,000, which we can, you know, proceed with now to get these facilities in a, in a state of readiness. We've got other projects that, that we need to look at, uh, one of them's right behind us, the old school, uh, the longer we let that fence sit there, it more is going to deteriorate, so we've got to come up with a decision, hopefully about that set for sometime next year, 2017, decide what we want to do with that. Uh, I just don't want to get saddled with additional costs over like 40,000, so I think right now it's the concept of taking these, these fields over. Why we would take deed to these fields, uh, is because we would be able to obtain grants for certain facilities, i.e. tennis courts. We're not paying the school district anything for these, taxpayers have already bought it and paid for it, so I'm looking at these facilities to be deeded over to the city at no cost to the city of East Ridge. I've talked to the superintendent, I've talked to the county commissioner, and I've talked to our elected, uh, school board member, they are all okay with that. The other part of this is they are, they're, right now they're putting up the bleachers on the north side, and I think they're gonna be complete with just about everything they're gonna do down there. The school superintendent informed me that they're not gonna put any money, there's no money appropriated for any of those facilities for at least next five years, it could be longer. That means that what's down there now is not gonna get any better, and if we want to, to, uh, have those in a usable position, uh, we need to take them over. It also provides, uh, a reason, not a reason to, to, will favorably on this, it provides some recreational opportunities in the center part of the city. That's one of the, kind of the complaints that I've received over the past four or five months is, everybody says everything goes out to the east, goes to Camp Jordan, we don't get anything here. Uh, this would give us some, some tennis courts, some, some fields that we could utilize. Uh, I understand years ago people used to do a lot of walking around that track, now the track needs some help, needs some assistance, possible grant we can get on that, to get that prepped up, in turn, let, let the public out there feel safe without walking around. Uh, four times around that track's a mile. Uh, stadium, I'm still a little apprehensive about it, that's something I'd really want to get into, uh, you know, during the, in the negotiation process, but we just have an opportunity to move forward on this, uh, might be advantageous to the city, and the concept, uh, right now would be just the, kind of the renoing from the council to proceed and sit it down and knock it out at a joint project agreement.
And like you said, I don't trust the East Ridge, nothing to the property, now?
No.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
I've got some apprehension, uh, uh, number one, I'm sitting here looking at, uh, the yearly costs of it, maintaining all the fields, uh, another question I have, you said that it will be deeded over to us, now, what's, what's our insurance, what's our liability going to be on these?
Same liability we have as Camp Jordan and any other field that we own in the city.
Yeah, but...
There would be a slight increase in the, in the increase in the, in the, uh, premium on an annual basis.
And what?
But it's, I don't have that, they would have to do a complete analysis on that.
Judy said she had that to us on Monday or Tuesday, she said you would, you would talk to her today and I'd talk to her as well.
Oh, did you?
Right before the meeting.
Yeah.
She said the only thing would be if we use, if we were having leagues down there, and of course we use a third-party insurance.
Well, we would make sure that any league or the school district or any other school district that would utilize that field would have to provide a line or to maintain them as, uh, as sure so that they, they would be responsible, same that we do out at Camp Jordan.
Camp Jordan, yes.
Same type of, same type of process we use there?
Uh, I understand your reasoning why you would like to do this, uh, and you want to, you know, of course, move, get some recreation up here and on this end of town, and as far as the school board or, or the, uh, you know, the superintendent saying they have no plans of doing anything, you know, on their radar for five years, if we were sitting here looking at him saying, "Hey, we're interested in taking over your fields," of course I would say that, uh, because they want us to, so that they don't have to do it, and they want us to maintain, you know, they, they want us to incur those obligations. Now, I, I just, uh, you know, a lot of people misunderstand that and think that East Ridge, the city council and the city of East Ridge run the schools out here, we have zero to do with the schools out here. Uh, I'm sorry?
I said we don't have to do, I agree with you.
Uh, we don't have anything to do with, uh, but with everything else that we have going on right now, I'm just not so sure that we want to take on additional added, uh, irons in the fire.
Just going to run you a red leaf to the city, what's we take up?
Well...
Very little.
Of course, you know, that, since we started this, you know, we've already got other people that have found out about it, that want to, you're looking at lacrosse and other things, and folks, we can run out as many fields as, as we can have in East Ridge, we can run out as many private cages as we can get in East Ridge. Let me just, let me just tell you this, when I was first asked about it and said we could do the tennis courts, I said, "Why can't we have it all?" Here's why I said this, and you might have to help me out with this, Ms. Claus, if you're looking at football, game field, $3,000, we're already doing that. On our game field, you're the ones collecting it, what's an average Saturday down there? How much money are we making?
About $2,500.
About $2,500 per Saturday that we're already making down there on that football field. Our football is right up there with our soccer and everything else we do, and we're as good as anybody in this area. Uh, when Mr. McPhee was on the, uh, council, we went out and looked one day at a field out there which is behind Camp Jordan Run, and I said, "Will this not make a beautiful football field?" And they said, "Yes." So we started looking at how much price would be, that football field up there, if we tried to duplicate the football field, first, that's the best football field playing facility in this town because you set it on top of it, and because it's been taken care of, Raymond James, and then took care of it for years and years, we continue that and we're, we're the one that's keeping it up now. Uh, we have a lawnmower that we were taking up there for them to start mowing with it before all this came up, so when I saw the chance to get the football stadium and knowing that it would cost me two to 2.5 million dollars to build a football stadium and I was getting one without spending two to 2.5 million, plus, we have nowhere for our kids to practice because they have to practice in fields next to the lights out there at Camp Jordan, because we just, we don't have football fields, we got soccer fields, we got everything but that. This would allow us also to bring our kids down here and practice in what used to be the practice field. We've also found out that all these fields, uh, have irrigation in them, that just nobody's done anything to keep up the irrigation, and when we went and checked the fields, the facilities, asked if we need some metal roofing and things like that, but it really doesn't need that much.
Okay, I've got a question, you said the, the seeds cut the grass on the football field and all that already, why?
Because y'all gave us permission a long time ago to do that, the council did, to take care of that football stadium.
Take care of the football field, and we, you know, take care of the place ball field, like, um, every year, and they ask us to do that.
Well, we're taking on more of the county's responsibility.
No, no, we're not, we're not mowing the grass up there, we said we had, I had a lawnmower, I was prepared to give to them to cut the grass.
No, you said, you said we're already cutting it in.
No, we're taking care of it, we're not cutting their, their grass, we take care of all of the field, we did not cut their grass.
How many...
And their county cuts everything up there but the ball fields, county doesn't cut the ball fields, they cut everything else.
They cut around them.
They cut around them.
They cut around fields, but they don't cut the fields.
So, so who cuts the fields?
Guy probably, Wayne Thompson.
Wayne Thompson's the one that's cutting the, uh, field up here, the football field right now.
That may be it.
Oh, it's James cut it.
I'm sorry?
Oh, it's James cut it this summer, we, uh, the lawnmower, yep, I have to say, the lawnmower, we cut it all summer until the first or second game, and then Wayne come up with his big tractor, and he's cut it every week since.
Why in the camp, why in the county doing it? That's what I'm trying to...
That's the, that's the thing, yeah, I mean, that's, it's the reason the stadium, the former stadium deteriorated.
Yeah.
There, there is a, there's a permanent, essentially a permanent plan of deferred maintenance, so unless something dramatic changes, they will essentially not do anything to maintain those facilities.
And I think three or four of you guys up there are members of the, uh, alumni committee, which is, uh, is working now to try to raise money, and they already came up with some bank account, I talked to Bobby the other day, and the difference between 50 and 75,000, how much they've raised, uh, to eventually do the press box, the, uh, locker room, and the concession stand all together. Tim James was here earlier, but he was sick and he's got a coach tomorrow night and I'll send him on, but Tim's already decided that the best place to do that would be where the old one was, on the side, which is on this side, uh, you know, he did Doug Rossers set it back there, Doug Rossers kept a lot of the fields going for years up there, so I mean, that's, it is what it is.
How long have you been moving the chains?
Forty-eight years.
He was just, he was actually, I don't know, I'm on the, the board of the East Ridge Hall of Fame, and we, we, we adamantly selected him to, uh, to enter the Hall of Fame for his service.
I appreciate it, man.
We appreciate you.
And that company's a whole, we love it.
So, I just thought it was an opportunity, I don't want to be acting from that, I did think that it could just turn around.
Well, it gives us a, it gives us a chance to put, and there's a lot of other things you can do up there, uh, it gives us an opportunity to put something on this end of Thomas and something on this end of Thomas, where you've got, you know, on, on both sides there, uh, and it's in the middle of the city, and it expands on our opportunities for later on. I mean, to me, I just would get it, somebody's giving us athletic facilities that are worth X amount of dollars and we can put them in, in order to take care of them, and that's what we do, I mean, we, that's what our crew does, that's what our team does, we make things better.
Let, let me ask a question. This, how much are we looking at here, set 60,000?
As far as, as far as annual maintenance?
You're looking at annual maintenance of about 60,000, you're looking at annual revenue, uh, he's projecting 17,400, that's a very, that's a very conservative figure, uh, and then the capital outlay would be a one-time charge of 40,100.
Okay, so how much, okay, so how much is the one-time initial capital outlay?
40,100.
Okay, so $40,000 for initial, 58,000 for yearly maintenance.
That includes an employee.
I, I'm seeing that, and so, so just say 60,000 a year. Now, again, I'm gonna bring up the forum, and I don't think y'all were there, one of the major issues was building a new, a new animal shelter, another one of the issues was, was hiring more police officers and fire officers, and, and now we want to take this on as well. Folks, how y'all gonna pay for all this? I mean, y'all gonna raise taxes?
No.
That's why we're, that's why we're...
That's why I'm here.
No, I'm not proposing to raise taxes on this.
Okay.
Okay?
That's why we've got a representative to get us grants.
No, no, I don't have, I don't...
My football game, I had the first time being saved. I hope y'all are okay. I hope y'all are okay. The tennis court, that was the main thing when we started out, it was the tennis court because they had in their mind that behind the bouquets, building the locker room, dressing room, weight room, bathrooms, with football players, so they got them out of school, all ready, so then. We don't get the tennis courts, which was a very first thing to initiate. And then another thing is, our citizens at City of East Ridge are paying Hampton County taxes. Hampton County not wanting to take our citizens' part in the county taxes to support our school up here's regulation. So that's no good. Our taxes, they were collected very early. They have to pay what the county should be paying for out of our property taxes that we're already paying.
I won't, I won't argue with that. Uh, I mean, certainly, certainly...
That, that the same? I'd like to make a motion that we turn this proposal down.
We have, we have a motion to, to reject the proposal. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have a second? Do we have any, any questions?
If you get through with that one, I'll, I'll make a motion to...
Well, you know, I, I, I will not, like I said, I will not argue with the fact that care should have been taken through the years.
Sample, our school board member, possible county commissioner need to get a little bit involved with it.
But the, yeah, the, 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 the problem, the problem is, I see it, is, is this. We can, we can rely on getting more of what we've got. If we do nothing, nothing happens there. We, we, there's no maintenance. Who ultimately suffers from that? Who, who ultimately suffers from that? It's our kids. It's our kids. And, and it's, it's not, I'm, I'm going to hold on just one, and I'll get, get right to you. Ultimately, you're right, that county, the, the money that we paid to county for the schools should go to help maintain these places. That's not going to happen. That's reality. It's not. And so, if, if our kids and, you know, the, the future generations are going to have decent facilities to play in, we're going to have to provide those. Can we, can we, can we do that? Yes. Can we, can we also use it for other functions that support the city? Yes. Uh, I, I think it's, it's reasonable. Are there going to be some challenges? I believe there will be some challenges. But it's a, I think a, in its basic form, it's, it's a good concept. And that's, that's my opinion on it.
You have one more question?
Okay, if, if I could, Mr. Roche, what, what did you want to say?
I was just saying, uh, when I first started teaching, or rather, we, we moved the baseball field up, and we put four beautiful tennis courts down. Well, the band came in and took that, so they moved them up here. Well, the time they moved them up here, I've never, ever seen the first person ever even sweep them, much less do anything. All the day, they were dropping off, and somebody would dump in some piece of, a used one, and put it down. So that's how this one here looks so badly, the, the fact. And I don't know if, if that's, you know, a lot of people play tennis, I don't think much about it. It'd be nice to have a really beautiful tennis court there with a lot of people.
Like, now we're getting restricted.
Well, I have another group of people coming to me saying, uh, Scoot brought me up here, the idea of four children, as you say, kids, okay? But the most of the times we here, in here, is if there's no place for the seniors and the adults, child, they're not going to go up there and play baseball, softball, and that. They come down here and walk around the track now. But their only place is for the sixteen and hundreds to go play basketball, or sixteen and over, because that's the age group we got out here, no place for them to go play basketball. And, uh, seniors that want to come down here, you know, I'm going to give maybe Lowery an example, she won't shuffle the board in horseshoes and, you know, and, uh, that's places for the seniors to do, and I can't see the seniors going up there. Well, we're going to have to have a direct line, and if they're, we can do it right over here by the highness out there, behind the front, instead of this, start there and spend our money. We purchased all that stuff for Ms. Lowery, and, and it'd be less than a thousand dollars.
I want to, I want to withdraw my second.
But, I'll, with all my motion?
I make a motion to table.
Motion to table, one second. Any comments, questions?
My motion too, I like that one.
Well, yeah, he...
Motion to table.
Yeah.
Motion to ten sports, ten sports, that's a company. Well, I mean, I don't, I don't believe, child, if they take quarters, then they'll hit him like the kids do on this end of town. That's really, I think it's, you build what built a football field down with the lights, probably a million dollars for the lights, you're probably looking at, you know, two million dollar stadium.
You get two-point-five million.
At least, and then you've got a stadium, or a softball field, that they do take care of. Baseball field, they come up, the last year, year before last, the tennis coach came up here and bagged this, this up for the tennis courts. We didn't do anything. The Alumni Association has got about seventy thousand dollars put in there, must have got a commissioner that's going to do the same, but he will not give to the school system because he knows they won't do what they need to do with the money. And he says, if we get the property, then he will come and do that.
Well, see, that's one of the reasons why I made a motion to table. I mean, that's the first I've heard of any of this stuff, regardless of, I'll talk about backroom meetings, but that's the first I've heard, heard of all of that. So, you know, that's why I made a motion to table. I mean, I'd like to discuss that.
Well, I've been, well, I've been going to the meetings, I mean, I'm, I'm on the meetings, so that's where I know about all that. It's not through backroom with the...
Oh, I wasn't making that accusation.
Okay, but I just think, I mean, the properties they're, they're giving, and, you know, it may be crazy. If we don't even spend, play, I mean, football fields can still be played on, baseball field needs a little work, makes it big road. But I think, uh, I think the food is, so, so like to eat and lay in.
Well, I think...
You know, I tried, one time I tried to build all these houses, and we, we had to offer buy all that down there to extend Camp Jordan.
I would certainly be willing to sit down and, and talk to these folks and, you know, and so...
Well, what they want, what they want to do is, they, in the negotiation, maybe not even work out. I mean, it may be they don't want to do, I mean, they...
That's why I want to sit down and talk to them.
But you've got, you've got the board members, school board members, that's...
Well, we're going to have to do it.
You've got school board members, you've got other...
And I think, I think the, essentially, what a, the potential action here tonight could do would allow the city manager to go in and, and find out if those things...
This is...
It's, it's going to be pretty unwieldy if we all have some kind of joint meeting with the school board and the county commissioner and all the rest, and we all try to hash stuff out. So, I mean, at this point, if, if a positive action on this would, would basically be telling Mr. Miller, you'll find out how this can get done.
Well, it's obvious the school board's not going to do anything, or else they wouldn't do, they don't want it, they don't want to maintain it. They did, they'd be doing it. So the main people I would like to talk to is the association, Alumni Association, um, and, and find out exactly what, what it is that they're, that they want to do.
Their school out there, well, they didn't put, they didn't build any restroom facilities and things like that, so. Uh, commissioner, so, out there, you know, we gave them money, it's going to be money. We're not going to be running a good thing, you know.
We have a, we have a motion to table in a second, uh, so we're going to have a roll call on that. Yes is to table, no is to not table. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gravitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Tagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Manning?
Uh, which way you say you want to say it? But yes vote is to table it, and no vote is to keep it up for discussion.
No. Councilmember Stole?
No.
Fairly.
No.
I'll make a motion that we ask the city manager to negotiate with the school board, see what the city, what kind of action we'll take in future, and come back to us.
I'd like that it will expand a little more to be able to cover some of the concerns expressed by Councilman Gravitt and regards to the association alumni, like... And also, you know, something else there is utility bills, you know, how much are utility bills out there?
We're, we're paying the walking track, they've paid it for years, the lots of the walking track that they pay for years.
Well, I mean, the football field, baseball field, like...
Okay, so we have a motion, and a second to allow the city manager to build in and potentially negotiate an agreement, assuming this agreement would come back to the council.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I, I would come back with some parameters and terms, and I would, the, all the other legal lease, uh, be handled by the two attorneys. Okay, so just to confirm, it will come back to us? Well, absolutely. I don't have that authorization. Okay, no way. No way.
But I, I, I do, I do think Shane's, you know, I know what school board, that's an old qualification, but I don't support any sports at all, I was in the board. It's like football team out there, they can't find the money to get a bus, take them to the play.
Somebody ought to know how to do that.
I can't get up.
All right, well, we have, we, all right, we have a motion in a second to allow, again, the city manager to further explore this possibility, potentially bring back a, a potential agreement.
That's good work.
And that is, and I think that...
No, 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 further explore, I want to get a...
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gravitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Tagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Manning?
Yes.
Councilmember Stole?
Yes.
Fairly.
Yes.
Thank you, Jim.
Before we get out of here, uh, Mr. Murray, city manager, if you don't mind, on my street, would you please have the votes inspector go down there and inspect those street cuts that, that the WTA made about two months ago? They, they filled in the work, but they didn't fill it in with asphalt, they've actually filled it in with, uh, I don't know what kind of stuff it is, but it's already worn out about, about three or four ranges now. Down this street, south of this street.
South?
South of this street.
It ain't concrete.
Thank you all.